Now, we're going to go ahead and call the board meeting to order. It's Monday, May 9th, 2016, and we want to welcome you all here. It is a recognition evening, so Laurel has asked that the board proceed to in front of the podium here. So if you could all get up and move down front, we'll go with that first.
Great. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce you to employees of the district who have served its students for 25, 30, 35, and even 40 years. These employees bring a wealth of history and experience to our district, and our students are the recipients of their talent. We'd like to read all of the names of those with these years of experience. We'd like to have you hold your applause until all of the names have been read, and we will be reading everyone's name regardless of whether they were able to make it here tonight. In order to give some perspective in terms of how long these valuable employees have been with the district, I have done a little bit of research on something that might have been going on in the world that long ago. So, we are going to start with employees who have been here for 25 years, and the Academy Award for Best Picture that year was Dances with Wolves. The record of the year was Another Day in Paradise by Phil Collins. And these employees began their service with the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Joan Boucher Garfield, Joanne Brown Rockwell Daycare, Christine Callahan Harrison, Cynthia Espy Jefferson, Deborah Fine Taft, Pamela Gerardi Harrison, Angela Hoyer Arthur, Tanya Johnson ELSC, Asa Kamhawi Madison, Delana Kendrick Rockwell Daycare, Kelly Kolkmeier Franklin, Sarah Langhurst Pierce, Mary Martenson Harding, Glenda McMillan Jefferson, Diana Mears Coolidge, Gail Miller Metro, James Mensch Kennedy, Pamela Northway Cleveland, Patricia Porter Taft Alternative, Thomas Schneblin Washington, Marlene Weber Transportation, and Michelle Wilson McKinley. Those employees who have been here for 30 years or more joined us when Oprah Winfrey's show hit national television, the Academy Award for Best Picture was out of Africa, and the record of the year was We Are the World. And these employees began their service. Anne Althoff Franklin, William Dyers ELSC, Kathy DeVorak Franklin, Crystal Fisher Madison, Jill Garwood Jackson, Jay Goodlove Kennedy, Rosemary Hayes ELSC, Karen James ELSC, Chris Jennings Wilson, Marie Johnston Harrison, Kay Carston ELSC, Paula Kincaid Jefferson, Jennifer Lang Jefferson, Lee Lemon Truman, Sarah Persing Arthur, Jeanette Schneider ELSC, Peggy Sheets Wright, Cynthia West Jefferson, and Cynthia Zierli Taft. The next three employees began their service to the district 35 years ago when Ordinary
Well, good evening.
People was the Best Picture of the Year, and the record of the year was Sailing by Christopher
It's my privilege, it is Board Recognition Month this month, so it's my privilege to
Cross, and Pac-Man Mania swept the country.
say a few kind words about these hardworking volunteers in front of me. So I'm pleased to speak tonight on behalf of our Executive Council in thanking our
Susan Covington Jefferson, Keith Jensen ELSC, and Brian Litz McKinley.
elected school board members for their commitment to public education and to our Cedar Rapids Community Schools. May is Iowa School Board Recognition Month and provides an opportunity for us to celebrate
The next two employees began their service 40 years ago, and 40 years ago, the best picture
these dedicated individuals, each of whom provides leadership through responsibilities
was One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest.
ranging from strong financial stewardship to enriching, rich, and diverse curriculum,
The record of the year was Love Will Keep Us Together, which it certainly has with these
making sure all students are prepared for a bright future when they graduate.
two employees, and the median household income was $12,686.
Of course, we're grateful for the contributions made by our school board members to support
And these two employees began their service.
our students and our vision of excellence for all.
Rebecca Collier Pierce and Paul James Washington.
Please join me in some applause for our school board members in their order.
Thank you all for your service to the district. We appreciate your years of service.
Well, good evening. It's my privilege, it is Board Recognition Month this month, so it's my privilege to say a few kind words about these hardworking volunteers in front of me. So I'm pleased to speak tonight on behalf of our Executive Council in thanking our elected school board members for their commitment to public education and to our Cedar Rapids Community Schools. May is Iowa School Board Recognition Month and provides an opportunity for us to celebrate these dedicated individuals, each of whom provides leadership through responsibilities ranging from strong financial stewardship to enriching, rich, and diverse curriculum, making sure all students are prepared for a bright future when they graduate. Of course, we're grateful for the contributions made by our school board members to support our students and our vision of excellence for all. Please join me in some applause for our school board members in their order.
With that, we want to go ahead and do an approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for that, Nancy?
Yes. I move that the agenda of Monday, May the 9th, 2016, Board of Education be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and this is a roll call action.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Meisterlein?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye.
With that, we'll turn it over to Dr. Buck for the superintendent's report.
Yeah, thanks. Variety of good news items here tonight. For the second year in a row, the Jefferson High School academic decathlon team placed third at the national competition. The 2016 event was held in Anchorage, Alaska on April 30th. Team members also won 20 individual medals. The team's faculty coach is Kevin Darrow. Congratulations to the Jayhawks. Johnson Steam Academy students are partnering with the Wellington Heights Neighborhood Association to beautify a new community garden in their shared neighborhood. The kindergarten through 5th grade students have designed and painted over 400 fabulously creative fence posts that will be installed around the garden as a United Way Day of Caring Project. Coolidge Elementary School and Taft Middle School, hey, there's Ryan Wise, Director Wise. Coolidge Elementary School and Taft Middle School have been recognized by the Iowa Department of Education for their work implementing Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, or PBIS, to promote a school-wide culture of positive behavior. Data are used to assess problem areas and behaviors within each school, and strategies are developed to counter them. Schools were honored for outstanding application of the systems and practices of PBIS. Three of our schools have been awarded project funds from the Iowa Governor's STEM Advisory Council for the coming school year. Funds from the STEM Scale-Up Program support programs including robotics, coding, and agricultural field experiences. The Johnson Steam Academy will receive $11,600 to support spatial-temporal math. The Kenwood Leadership Academy will receive five Making STEM Connections kits at a value of $28,000. And Metro High School received $8,000 to participate in the first robotics competition. And you'll notice this tonight, we had the opportunity to recognize our retiring employees last Friday with a special luncheon program. We all enjoyed student entertainment from the Van Buren Elementary Show Choir as part of the celebration. Some 90 district employees have already or are retiring during the 2016-17 school year. These include administrators, teachers, and support personnel. Their combined years of service to the district totals 1,916. I want to take another opportunity to thank them for their service to our students and to congratulate them on their retirement. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Buck. Any board reports tonight? I am excited that we have some graduations coming up before the next board meeting. So, we'll have four of those coming up in two weeks, so I'll be looking forward to that. And the board was recognized tonight, but we couldn't do what we do without support from a great administrative team. And that starts with Dr. Buck, and then Board Secretary Laurel Day and Board Treasurer Steve Graham. So thanks to all of you for making us look good. So we appreciate that and everything you do. All right. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. And the first we would like to come and present to us is Ben Drzimski. And Ben, if you'd like to go to the podium, there's five minutes, and just give us your name and your address.
Okay. I am Ben Drzimski, and I live at 6917 Taraza Drive Northwest in Cedar Rapids. Me llamo Ben Drzimski, y en escuela estoy en cinco grado. Esta noche quiero decir que aprender español es muy importante. Just in case you don't know what that phrase in Spanish was, that means, "My name is Ben Drzimski, and in school, I'm in 5th grade. Tonight, I want to tell you that Spanish is very important." The kids in my grade were the only ones to ever have Spanish our entire elementary school career, and I'm very grateful about that. Now that I've learned that they're going to take away Spanish, I felt sad for the students in grades lower than me, because they don't get any Spanish until high school. I'm especially sad because my 1st grade sister, Faith Drzimski, cried when she heard the bad news that you were taking away Spanish. That made me angry. I really think Spanish is important to know because of growing a population of people that are American that speak Spanish. My friends and I decided that something had to be done. My friend, Adam Ponik, and I decided on creating a petition to help save Spanish. So far, I have 265 signatures on my petition. I will give you a copy of the petition, and I ask you to consider keeping the elementary school Spanish program. I understand that you made a tough choice because the increase the state legislature allowed was smaller than the increase in costs to keep the same number of teachers. I plan to share my petition to the state legislature and ask them to raise money our schools get, and if I'm successful, I hope you can bring the Spanish program back. Thank you for your time tonight. I also want to thank you for volunteering your time to be on the school board and for a phenomenal elementary school career, including the chance to learn Spanish. Adios amigos.
Thank you, Ben. We appreciate those comments. All right, and next we have Jeff Foster. And if you'd approach the podium and give us your name and address. We have five minutes, and Laurel will let you know if the five minutes is up.
My name is Jeff Foster, and I live at 3209 Tamara Drive Southwest. Board members, I am speaking to you tonight as a grandparent concerned with the level of cleaning that has become accepted in the district. A few years ago, you as a board accepted a lower level of cleaning due to many years of budget reductions to the custodial department. Again this year, the custodial department has been asked to reduce its budget by $175,000. The reductions that have been proposed to you are largely at the high school level on second shift, where there are a phenomenal amount of activities that take place. I understand that reductions have to be made because of low allowable growth, but I find it interesting that just one day after the last board meeting, a custodial supervisor position was posted online at a salary of $61,000. The custodial supervisor position originated years ago as a sharing agreement with the Marion Independent School District, with Marion paying 2/3 of the salary and the benefits. After a couple years, Marion opted out of the agreement, and the position was absorbed into our district. Also this year, the department added an office manager position. As I looked online at the Building and Grounds organizational chart, I found that there were nine people in supervisory or management positions. The emphasis in cleaning in the department now is hallways and restrooms instead of classroom cleaning, where teachers and students spend the better part of their school day. Examples of past budget reductions are, in the 1980s, when I was a custodian at Roosevelt Middle School, we had six full-time positions. Roosevelt now has four full-time and one part-time position. As a building engineer for several years at Van Buren, we had two full-time and one part-time position. Now there are only two full-time custodial employees. It has been stated by a person in high authority in the district that all positions have been created because they are necessary and add value to the district. Recently, the superintendent of the Devonport Schools stated that over recent years, he has been slashing central administration in order to keep teachers and programs. In the 1980s and the 1990s, the Building and Grounds Department was run by two to three people, when the district had more employees and more buildings than they do at the present time. Elimination of the custodial supervisor position and the office manager position, while not completely absorbing the amount the custodial department needs to reduce, would certainly soften the blow immensely and save a few much-needed jobs. Continuing to cut this department will affect the health and the safety of the students and staff of the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Our kids and our teachers deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. We appreciate your comments. And next, we have Mary Arenas. Welcome.
Mary Arenas, I live at 3015 Kenridge Terrace Northeast, Cedar Rapids, Iowa 52402. I'm here today to ask that you educate your staff in the Cedar Rapids School District about ACEs. I don't know if any of you know what the ACEs are. That's Adverse Childhood Experiences, and many, 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 many of our students have 1, 2, 3, or even, I know one person that has 10. The ACEs are adverse childhood experiences that can be emotional abuse, physical abuse, sexual abuse, emotional neglect, physical neglect, mother-treated violently, household substance abuse, household mental illness, parental separation or divorce, and incarceration of a household member. I have seven children on my way to adopt an eighth. I am a single mother, and I work very hard for my children to learn all different avenues in life so they can be well-rounded. My son, by the way of adoption, received the Rosa Parks Award Saturday at the Cedar Rapids Public Library in the Whipple Room for his service at Hy-Vee Grocery Store, his exemplary service there, for his service for volunteering, and also the time that he spent with my mother, Pat Arenas, before she passed. Some of the teachers not knowing these adverse childhood experiences and not always following the IEP as they should, my son asked if he could repeat a test when he was gone for my mother's funeral in Wake, but I understand was denied this. And when stress comes for children that are affected with this, just for my individual that I'm speaking about, graduation is coming up, the passing of his grandmother, my mom, and him serving our country to join the U.S. Marines to steal our freedom, as many, many people do so. He got cleared today for his heart condition, so he will be joining the Marines in August. I just want teachers to know that when the children have the ACE, it affects their health, but it reduces the ability for them to respond, learn, or figure out things which can result in school problems. It lowers tolerance for stress, which can cause behaviors such as fighting and checking out, and that's what one teacher says, "He's there, but he's not there." And this is affecting him, and it needs to be, the teachers need to be educated when these things happen. Sometimes these people have a hard time, difficulty with making friends and maintaining relationships, and it increases problems with learning and memory that can be permanent, and it increases stress hormones which affect the body's ability to fight infection and may cause lasting heart problems. So I'm just asking that the school district be aware of this condition with ACEs, and when the children are in your classroom and you know parts of it, if you can just please allow them to take a test over, or finish a sheet and not say no when their grandmother just died. And we have 11 days of school for my senior, and I hope he graduates with the help of the staff at Washington. I want to say Mr. Bruni has been so wonderful, and I just want to say that I hope this teacher that I'm referring to will help along with, so that they can hand-in-hand make sure that my son graduates, and he's not a statistic for our community of a person of African-American descent that is not going to be able to graduate.
Thank you. We appreciate that and have taken note of that, and I know Dr. Buck has written down some notes, and we'll follow up on that. Thank you. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any comments or any items that anybody would like to? Are there any items for the consent agenda that anybody, Mary?
I'd like to just talk about BA 16301, which is the garbage disposal contract.
All right.
I just have never seen that before, so I wondered how long the contract was that we had in place. And I apologize for not putting this question out before.
It's okay. We had a three-year contract that went five years, and so we're going back out for another three-year contract.
Okay.
We have the option of adding a couple of years on the end.
I'm also curious about composting or separating food out of our garbage process. Is that possible? I know we did a pilot a couple of years ago with McKinley.
There's a couple of green teams are doing composting, but I'm not sure if we're ready district-wide to take that out of our garbage. There are a few schools that are doing that, and we keep, and as the green teams are more involved, we continue to look at options, but there's been a couple of companies that have approached us, and I think one school in particular is working with one right now.
Okay. And I love your green team, so thank you for deploying them throughout the district. And then just one more. Is there any opportunity, Rob, that we could have city, the city pick up our garbage? We have neighborhood schools. Could we, have we had a conversation with them about that?
I have not. That's a good point. In our ongoing effort to work with the city on a variety of things, that would be a good subject that we could bring up. I will take you up on that recommendation and make that call tomorrow, see what's available there.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I had. Appreciate your comments.
Great. Thanks, Rob. Any other items? Okay. Seeing none? Is there a, oh, Nancy?
I'm sorry. BA 16295, the agreement with the Cedar Rapids Community School District and the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation grant writing, and I believe it's a program that will be implemented at Arthur and Grant Elementary School. And I'm just reading a comment here that I think this is great, we have the grant, but it says this will not be additional work or another thing for staff, but instead deepening of the work. If you could just explain that more, because I, my concern is additional work put on our staff, and I just need some clarification.
Well, Angie is here as well, but I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about it. It is really, we are looking at how we can improve some of the things we're doing around reading, really focusing our work around literacy and the work that needs to happen with reading, and really making a better, kind of, and Angie, I'm probably stumbling over this, Joyce here as well. And it's actually Arthur and Garfield, not Grant, and so that was a misprint. It does say Grant.
Oh, because it says, okay.
It does say Grant. You're right. So, do you want to add to that and go up to the podium, either one of you, please? These two are the two that went to London to kind of see the process, and it really is getting some funding to make sure that we can implement some of those practices, which are just implementing a stronger reading and math program than what we're currently doing. Not that we're doing anything wrong, but really making that focus there and that commitment there.
I think the one, when you had asked, it would be more work for staff. I think really the intention is to make less work for staff. What we're trying to do is we're really trying to go back to that integrated, so we can use reading and math, so teach those reading and math skills, and integrate all the science and the social studies and the SAB and all the stuff we do. Currently, if you look at an elementary schedule, it's tough. It is very, the minutes in the day and what we are able to do with the children, so our goal is to really use that reading and that math and integrate it into the other subjects so that it is less taxing on the students and the staff as well.
And I would add, it's really just focusing on the important things, and so just spending lots of time with teachers and training them on what strategies can we use to better our focus and to make sure that we're hitting the right things for kids in reading and math. And we embarked this year at Garfield with a math initiative where we had Grantwood AEA on-site coaching during the school day, so it wasn't additional, it was during their day, and that coaching piece was what made it so successful, because teachers could ask questions, and so we kind of want to replicate that with the reading piece as well. So how do we bring that same kind of work, that coaching opportunity, so that teachers can improve their practice?
So were you two be training the staff?
Well, that's part of the grant. We'd like to, you know, we're adopting a new reading series already, and there is some professional development as part of that. What we want to use some of this grant for is to add more days so that we What we want to use some of this grant for is to add more days so that we can get those professionals in to do some additional coaching. And then, I lost my train of thought.
Support for PERS as well?
Support for PERS as well. So one of the things we saw in London was every classroom had a paraprofessional in the room, and the really great thing about that was if a teacher was absent, that paraprofessional had the same training the teacher did, and so the instruction didn't stop, whereas now we have to plan different things that we think subs can handle. So it was just really nice to be able to watch that in action and see the instruction continue as it was.
The other thing that was very exciting about the PERS that we saw as well is, right now, we currently, as we are teaching, if we have one teacher in with maybe, you know, 25, 26 students, if that student is not understanding the instruction that we're giving at that time, with the PERS, what was great there is that the pair was able to slip in right then and there and help that child write as we're teaching and kind of help with those misconceptions. Our current system, I love as well, we have time during the day where we are able to, we don't introduce any new instruction, but we go back and we help those kids that are maybe struggling in one area or the other. That works as well, but I was very excited to see the intervention being able to happen right then and there, right at the time.
With people who have a relationship with the student. So the mom that talked about those ACEs, everybody has a relationship then, so instruction can continue.
Thank you.
Gary?
Well, considering the financial situation in the district, I truly appreciate the idea of going out and looking for optional resources, but it also, to me, sends up some warning flags too, that it sounds like it could be a fairly expensive program to maintain if we're adding a pair for every room and additional costs. The grant initially gets us started, but then, like a lot of things, then once the grant money runs out, are we saddled with a program that draws resources from other places? So if we can find some things, you know, we use it as an experiment, as a way of, can we really see some progress, but I just caution what happens down, down the line with.
And that is part of the application process as well. They want to know, are there other outside entities that can help us sustain the project as well? So that is a piece of it, that we're looking at different outside resources that can help us too.
I think one of the most important parts is we're looking at the system as a whole, and how can we change our current system to deliver the best for the students there? Whereas the PERS are a fantastic plus, I don't think it is, I don't think it rides on just having the extra PERS.
Just one more thing from me. Everything that we do really based on data, I mean, it's for the kids, based on data, are we seeing the needle move? So I assume in all of this process, there'll be, you know, valid data and research that shows that this is making a difference, because if it's not, I mean, it's a lot of work for, you know, for nothing. So hopefully, that's built into this whole process.
Can I say something?
Yeah, Mary.
Angie and Joy, I read about the school that you went to, and I was really impressed with the stats as far as progressing kids in literacy. This is a really phenomenal opportunity, I think, for us to embark upon, and I'd still rather start it and figure out funding as time goes on than not do it at all.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, too. We appreciate you being here. Anything else? No? Okay. Are there any other items anybody would like to pull for comment or questions? All right. Seeing none, I have a motion to move the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is it a second?
Second.
And this is a roll call vote.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Ann Halt?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Westerkamp?
Aye.
Director Chikobo?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. All right. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to learning and leadership, and tonight we have with us the Academy for Scholastic and Personal Success and their agreement. I'll turn this over to Paul.
Yes, I'd like to present to the board for your consideration, the annual agreement with the Academy for Scholastic and Personal Success, and we've invited some representatives of the Academy, as well as some students from the Academy, to speak to the board tonight prior to your consideration of, for that agreement. So we're going to start with a quick video that the Academy has produced, and then the students will speak to us about the impact the Academy has had on them.
Hello. This is Dr. Ruth White, founder and director of the Academy for Scholastic and Personal Success. For over 27 years, my program has been working to close the achievement gap among students of color by offering rigorous coursework and culturally infused training by teachers who look like the students they serve. For nearly three decades, we have maintained a 99% graduation rate.
It is something that I've dreamed about, being able to be a part of an organization that is academically sound, that is socially sound, but that is mired in cultural awareness.
So I've never had that experience of having someone that looked like me teach me about my background and where I came from, so it was like a whole new experience, and I loved it.
As a young person, you learn first and foremost the struggle of people that have come before you to kind of lay the path to help be where I am today, and I know that I stand on the shoulders of people who have struggled and died and didn't have those opportunities, so it's a personal obligation that I carry as a man now.
You learn more about yourself and get to meet other people.
Children of color getting together from various socioeconomic backgrounds is huge and helpful to all.
I feel like I'm more supported now than I was in like elementary school and middle school, and I always have somebody to lean back on.
Okay, school and the academy are different because like the academy is a more laid-back environment, the teachers are more like personal with you because the class sizes are smaller.
Some very specific outcomes, like assisting them with academic skills. It's opened their eyes just on what possibilities lie out there, and they've gone somewhere.
In one of the classes, like we do ACT prep, and it was good, especially being there as a sophomore, you can get like a good head start on it.
After we did all of the classes for the two weeks, then we went to Chicago for four days.
That trip was really cool, just seeing all of the, like the museums and the art places and all the different restaurants. It was like you got to see a new side of Chicago.
But I think we ought to be celebrating and cultivating academic excellence when we see it exhibited in our students as well, and that's what the academy does.
And I think the more that you can celebrate who you are and then show at an early age what has been lent to a nation, not just a community of people, but a nation, but it's also a community of people that helped build that nation. So I think the earlier that a child understands cultural roots, where they've come, where they've begun, where the middle is, and maybe where the forward is moving is always good. I think it's a plus.
I feel like it literally saved me, so I became connected, and so I feel like if it just means that I reach one or two kids and help them to get connected and get inspired and want to reach their potential and want to do something important with their lives, then it's worth it, so.
I don't, I don't really care how I look, I just, I care about what I'm doing and how and what I'm doing and what I'm learning and how much I'm getting it, how much I'm getting into it.
I think it helps us because then we feel more, we have more pride in who we are and what we come from, and because then, when we're in the future, we can think about, oh, the people behind, the people that have, my heritage has done amazing things, and so can I, so I want to learn more and do more and be a better person so I can be like them.
The ambitious nature of our program brings the costs to $2,500 per student. To continue and expand, we need to raise at least $100,000. Together, we are the best chance of success for our students of color. Let's give them the future they deserve. For more information and to contribute today, please visit theacademiesps.com. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Afnan Alshik, 4618 Marsus Circle, Northeast Cedar Rapids, Iowa 52402. I attend, I'm a junior at Kennedy High School, and I have been appointed to speak about a normal week at the academy. So Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays are what we call a regular school day, where we have, we start at 8 o'clock, we all meet in this big room, and Dr. White opens up with, I don't know, a quote, a historical story, something that ties back to African heritage or African-American culture. And then we split up into three groups, and we, these groups are based on achievement levels, and we go to our respectful classes. The school day looks like one hour of math and science, one hour of post-secondary seminar, and one hour of history and literature. In math and science, we learned about historical Black figures that helped advance math and science. And then post-secondary seminar was a very important class for me as someone who was going into my junior year of high school. There, I learned about something called the ACT, who would have known, something that is pertinent to get into college. We did some practiced questions, practiced essays, we got prompts, we wrote our prompts, got our feedback from our teacher, Dr. Orey. And then history and literature, which was my favorite personally, personally my favorite class, was taught by Ms. Thomas, who was a student at the University of Iowa, working to get her PhD. We learned about so many things in that class, and I learned how to write a lot better than I used to, which was important for me. So it was very interesting to see the various achievement levels, first of all, in my own class that had very few kids. We were all at different levels, especially in math, so I liked being the one to help my peers move along, and I don't know, it was very helpful for all of us to come together and help each other. So I go to Kennedy, as I said, and as we all know, the diversity there is very lacking. There aren't many students of color that go to Kennedy, so being in a school that everyone looked like me, and all my peers and my teachers and my directors, they all looked like me, it was, it made learning with them a lot more enjoyable for. So then, that's Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. On Wednesdays, we had open discussions where we'd sit in one of the, one of the rooms, and then we'd make the tables into like a big square, and we'd all sit facing each other, and we would talk about anything we wanted. We talked about things ranging from the presidential race to time management to racial profiling and police brutality, that the recent events that was happening over the summer. And it was, I can't even describe the experience of hearing everything, one of my peer, that my peers had to say, and seeing things from their point of view was very enjoyable. And then on Fridays, we had films and guests. We'd watch documentaries about people of color and how they got where they were, and we had guests. So for example, one time we had a panel of about nine people, students of color that went to the University of Iowa, who were getting their PhD in some sort of math. And then we also had two of the three African-American police officers that serve on the Cedar Rapids Police Department, and that was especially enjoyable because we got to see their reaction to the recent police brutality that was happening in the media. And I don't know, it was just really interesting to hear what things looked like from the other side, I guess. So all in all, the academy wasn't just like an academic experience. I got a lot of that done, but also cultural. I learned a lot about Black history, things that you don't learn about in your normal U.S. history classes because time is so little in a school year, and so having six weeks of just filled with Black history was very, very enjoyable.
My name is John Ross, 52405, 1400 N. Avenue Northwest, Cedar Rapids. This past summer was my first time going to the academy, and to me, calling it a positive learning environment would be an understatement, because all of the teachers are very, very high, very highly qualified, and they all hold you to a higher expectation than other teachers would. Ms. Edmonds was our math and science teacher. Ms. Thompson was our African-American literature and history teacher, and Dr. Orey was our post-secondary seminar teacher. And I appreciated Dr. Orey's class the most because it got me prepared for what I wanted to do after high school. Like Afnan said, it was a lot of writing essays and learning about standardized testing that you would have to do to get into the schools that you wanted. Really, just having a place where, unlike in our regular schools, where some teachers would cast you aside before you even show them what you can do just because of your background or what you look like, you have teachers that will actually hold you to a much higher standard because they expect more from you. And that pushes us forward because when you have a teacher that expects excellence, then you'll produce excellence. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Alexi Bolden, and I will be talking to you about the impact the academy had on me. Okay, so before the academy, I didn't know I was Black. Like, I knew I was Black because I could see it, but I didn't know what the culture meant. So the culture was a completely new environment to me. I learned to love it very quickly. Well, living in a predominantly white city, unfortunately, the African-Americans at my school don't have the same mentality that I do of being the best versions of themselves. So when I was at the academy and surrounded by all these people who were like, wanted to get out of Cedar Rapids and see something new for themselves, I was like, yeah, this is nice. And so, my first year at the academy was this past summer, and I'll admit, the idea of doing schoolwork in summer was not an ideal way of spending my time, but I figured why not better myself instead of sleeping in until noon and staying up till 3:00 a.m. every day. Classes were geared towards math, language arts, and a current events-type class that also prepared us for college. We were taught how to respond to certain situations that we might face growing up being Black, how to respond to racist situations, how to nicely tell a friend not to use the N-word. The best thing about the classes, however, was although that I knew I was learning, I didn't really mind it. I'm kind of a nerd about school, so when I could make connections between things I learned at the academy and things I was currently learning at school, it was a pretty magical moment. My personal thing, favorite thing about the academy was when we had guest speakers coming in and saw these Black adults who had managed to achieve their dreams despite being told like they couldn't do it because of their skin color, because of where they came from. So the academy for me opened the door to my culture that I wasn't aware of. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hannah Borsay, 1617 20th Street Northwest. I will be talking about the trip after the academy, after the six-week program. We go on a five-to-seven day trip, and with that, we get to go to HBCUs, historically Black colleges and universities, and we get to just be in an environment that usually won't, that we're not in like Iowa. We get to see many different people, and we get to be more intimate with our classmates and with our teachers. And with the academy, I've been in it three years, and I have just learned to always fall back on it, because with that, I can always go back to any of the teachers if I need help with any of my classes that I don't understand, because they're educated and they know what they're doing. They've helped me through the academy, and I know that I can always hold back on them. They are just always there for me, I can say, and it has taught me to be more understanding of others and also just to be more confident in myself with public speaking and anything else that I do. I expect a lot from less students and also from the teachers, and I get a lot back from them, and with that, thank you.
Shouldn't we clap?
Shouldn't we clap? I think so.
Ruth White, 319 Eastland Drive, Southeast Cedar Rapids. I'm the founder and director of the Academy for Scholastic and Personal Success. There are a couple of things I'd like to say, but really, these students have said it all better than I could say it, and I feel like I've been saying the same thing for many years, and to hear it from them really validates what I've been saying all along. Before I say anything else, though, I would like to thank them for coming and for speaking so eloquently, and also thank the board members who are here, who also believe in this program and believe in the young people that are taking part in it. I believe that the Academy is a valuable program. It's one that's needed in more places than here, but we have it here, and it's a complicated program. It's a rigorous program, and it is an intense program. Rather than try to explain to you the complexity of it or how complicated it is, I'd like to just make four points. The first is that students without an Academy have no sense of themselves. They have no sense of their heritage or who they are. That is sometimes magnified by where they come from, by who their parents are, whether their parents have some sense of who they are, what kinds of experiences they've had. Two, students can complete their entire school careers in our community without seeing a person who looks like them. This is a deficiency that I know that the district is seeking to rectify, but it is something that we really need to look at very, very carefully. I think I can say with confidence that I'm the oldest person in this room, and when I was in school, I had the very same experience. So I know whereof I speak, and so many years later, to have these young people have the same experience, I think, is really not acceptable. Three, the history for African-Americans in this country represents an unbroken chain from slavery to the present, with a peak at opportunity during the radical Reconstruction era and another peak during the very bloody and violent civil rights era. I think in this day and time, we can see some recidivism to days and times which we thought were past, but yes, they're not. So it's important to have young people armed with information and knowledge about their culture so that they can fight against these evils. And four, as a society, it's unfortunate that we place more value on blacks in athletics and entertainment than we do on blacks who achieve academically. The Academy seeks to rectify all of these wrongs. So for me, it, as you, I think everybody knows who I am, for me, it is a passion. Because I'm the oldest person in the room, you might think I would have said, oh, well, let's just let it go. But as long as there are young people like this, I cannot let it go. It is something that I will work on until I can't work on it anymore. We are working towards sustainability. I do know that when I am on a walker, that I might not be able to take kids to Chicago or Atlanta, and so there needs to be somebody else to come behind me or work beside me, and we're working on that. So when I'm talking to a group of people whom I fear may not be as well-versed as we all should be in the true history of our country, I always like to tell them to read something. I'm not a numbers person, but I am a literary person. And so I have recommended to Dr. Buck that he read a couple of books, and he told me it was too big, but...
That's the outset. It's like a doorstop.
It's a big book, but it's worth it.
Worth reading.
Yes. So I'm going to recommend to you educators that you look at Geneva Gay, who wrote, has written for a couple of decades on culturally responsive teaching, and that is her seminal work, so Culturally Responsive Teaching by Geneva Gay. And that concludes my comments, and I will be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Dr. White. We appreciate that. Are there questions for Dr. White, or the students, or advisory group?
I would just like to thank the students. You guys did a great job, and Dr. White, you've done a great job. When I'm looking at your presentation here, my daughter Shamara participated in the Academy, and she turned out to be a great person.
She did. We don't take it, total credit for that, but we had a little piece, a teeny piece.
So one of the things you talked about, making sure that this was sustainable, Dr. White, and can you tell us a little bit about how you're doing that and about how you or we as a school district might expand this? I mean, these are wonderful students, and there's 25 of them a year, right?
Correct.
So how can we help? What else can we do? What else is out there that can make a difference? Obviously, some of us will be at the banquet on Thursday night, and that's one, that's one way, I know that you're working on this, but what else is there?
Correct, and I just happen to have an invitation in case you haven't had a chance to see it. I will leave it with you, along with a brochure that explains the program. I'll leave both of those things. The key to the Academy is, to success in the Academy, is knowing your culture. So it's important, it's imperative that the person who takes over for me knows that, and it must be a passion. So because we are a program that focuses unapologetically on bringing African-American students along in terms of knowledge of their culture, that passion is an important piece and the knowledge of culture is an important piece. I have a person who's coming behind me, coming alongside of me, so that part of the sustainability model is being taken care of. The other part, frankly, is funding and financing. It is, I would, I will say, criminal that there are only 25 students in the Academy every summer. It's almost criminal that the Academy is a six-week summer program, that we finish at noon. We would really like to expand to a full day, having two sessions, one session for students who can come from 8:00 to noon and one session for students who, usually because of sports, cannot come or do not come from 8:00 to noon, but could come in an afternoon session. So we're looking at expanding in that way. A part of this video, which I think is arguably the most impressive, sorry, guys, is the little kids. And so we have the Academy Expansion Program, which is currently cited at Johnson Steam Academy. We need to be in more elementary schools because the model is that we start at grade three, and because students can read at grade three, and are read-to-learn, and then have a middle school program, and that middle school program feeds to the high school program. Well, you may have been in the room when I practically lost my composure when I found that the triple AP programs were not funded, had not been funded for this year. My grandson is in the triple AP program at McKinley, and it's a good program. We use that as our feeder to the high school program. Until we have our own middle school piece or until we can morph the triple AP programs into a middle school academy program, then we use the triple AP programs to feed to the Academy. So that's another piece that we would like to see advanced or augmented, abutted. So of course, all that costs money. We're doing our own fundraising. We'll be strategic planning in, doing strategic planning in July after the Academy is over and after we come back from our trip, which of course is always secret until the end because everybody doesn't get to go. You have to earn the right to go. And so when we do our strategic planning sessions, we'll be looking at these components. We'll be coming to you, asking whether or not there's any more funding, and I know what the landscape is for the district, and I'm mad at the governor, just like everybody else is, but you know, it is what it is. But we get $25,000 from you, and that's $1,000 per student in the Academy. Students in the Academy get $2,500 worth of services. So actually, you know, we're getting half, not quite half, from the district in terms of what we actually, what actually students get. We do a lot for a little bit of money. We do a lot for a little bit of money, and we've got some really good partners. We will be beating the bushes for more partners. We'll be doing some work with Rockwell this summer, looking at a partnership with them. The issue with that is, and I'm all for a partnership with Rockwell, and we can partner in many, many ways, but the bottom line is funding. So unless Rockwell's partnership includes a contribution, then it will simply be, remain a partnership. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely, Dr. White. Thank you. Any other, yeah, Gary?
First of all, I'll compliment you, Dr. White, on the video. You're right, it's, it was excellent, one of the best pieces I've seen, and I think there are many opportunities we can use it to advantage. One of the things that you talked about was the lack of educators of color that we have in the district, and it's something that we have, from a district level and a board level, have struggled with over a number of years. I think one of the things we learned is that in order to entice or bring people of color in, we have to demonstrate that this is an open, welcoming community with opportunities. I believe that video has some value in helping to project that image, so it might be something, with your permission, that we would be able to use.
Just don't cut out the part that says we need money.
I think that could be added.
Okay. Thank you. Joe Clark, Backdoor Productions. He does really nice work, and he'll be at the fundraiser, so if you want to talk to him about doing more, I'm sure he would be happy to hear anything you have to say. The issue of African-American staff is a ticklish one. It's a complicated one. It's one that I've watched over the many years that I've been here. A lot of talk about, and I have to say, not much success with. I think that I was part of the last successful recruiting drive that the district launched, and I won't tell you when that was. I probably slipped up and told some people, but it was a long time ago. And I'll say Craig Curry was superintendent, and that'll tell you how long ago it was. And I remember being recruited. Actually, I was recruited as a part of an entourage. My husband was the one who was, then-husband was, the one who was actually recruited, and he negotiated a package deal that included me and five other teachers, one of whom was not African-American. And so that kind of recruiting effort, I think, has not outlived its usefulness. I think that another long-term opportunity is that grow-your-own idea, and that's what we are attempting to do with the Academy. And Jason Edwards, who you saw on the video, is a perfect example of that. He was in the first Academy class. Carl Casell was in the first Academy class. And so you talk about people who gain some sense of who they are and gain some sense of what is possible, and then go ahead and use what they've learned to advance themselves, and then they come back here, and they raise their families here, and then you have some of that kind of rollover impact that you're looking for. But we can't keep pointing to a Jason and a Carl. I think there needs to be a real intentional effort to find people who are not put off by low minority statistics, who are, they have to be strong in themselves. It is a lonely place. You know, Stacey Walker wrote an article called "The Only One," I think it's called "The Only One." It was published in the Little Village magazine. And he talks about being a student at Washington High School, and I know you've had the same experience being in an AP class because you're supposed to, you know, push yourself to be in an AP class, and then you're the only one in that AP class. And so when, you know, somebody talks about Huckleberry Finn and the N-word, all heads turn to you. Or when somebody asks about slavery, all eyes turn to you. And that's unfair for you, and it's actually unfair to all of the students in that class. So the idea of having enough self-awareness, enough self-confidence, enough strength of character to be able to weather those kinds of buffeting winds, if you will, is necessary in order to live in a place like this as a person of color. And you know, anybody who has lived here more than 20 years can tell you that. Nancy. So I think that it's important for the district, if in fact you are serious about increasing the number of staff of color, to forge or develop a plan with strategies and then go out and do it. You can go to HBCUs, but you need to know that students in HBCUs are in HBCUs for a reason, historically black colleges and universities. They're looking to become engineers, they're looking to become medical professionals. They are sometimes willing to take the risk to come to a Cedar Rapids, Iowa, but more often than not, you're going to say, Iowa? Is that where they grow potatoes? You know, because it's just that, Iowa is just that provincial in their view. So I would look, yes, at HBCUs, but also at Midwestern colleges and universities that have some population of students of color because those students know what it's like to live here. And that's not a bad thing. It's not bad to live here, but it is very different, and culture shock is a real thing. So some people find it difficult to navigate that.
Any other questions or comments?
Mention the other book?
Absolutely.
So the other book is, because it's a great read, "The Warmth of Other Suns" by Isabel Wilkerson. And I was talking to a gentleman the other day, and he was telling me about his grandparents moving from the South to Detroit, and it was, I'm like, hey, I actually have some insight.
You know that, yeah.
Yeah, it's good stuff, good stuff. So worth a read, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Well, we appreciate all the work you're doing and all of your team from the Academy and the students. You guys are awesome, and I just hope that you all help spread this to other students and help continue giving us insights as to what we can do as a school district to support this as adults in the community. All right? Thanks. You're awesome. Thank you. We'll see you Thursday night.
Surely. And if anybody else is interested, I will leave the brochure and the invitation.
MPS, you said you were not a person that was into data, but you provided some good data tonight, so thank you. We appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate that. All right. Next, we'll turn it over to, oh.
Require a voice vote.
It does require a voice vote, so all of those in favor of approving the Academy for Scholastic and Personal Success agreement signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, the same. Abstain. The motion passes. Yes. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you. And next, we'll move into the professional learning update with Stephen Probert.
I'd like to thank Dr. Buck, President Laberty, members of the board, and guests for being here this evening. It's my pleasure to update you with the changes that are coming to the professional learning calendar for next year, describe the process that we used, and to share our plans for making professional learning on Fridays a success. We have a little bit of a different kind of video to show you. It was a result of Justin locking me in a room with a whiteboard, but I think it does communicate what we're going to be doing, so we'll take a few minutes for that.
What is the function of professional learning? Why does professional learning matter? Why do we have 16,000 students stay or go home? In that question lies the answer. Professional learning matters because our students are rapidly changing. As those needs change, so does the instruction they need. It is the purpose of professional learning to provide a space for instruction to keep pace with our students' ever-changing world. The next question is, how do we best meet the learning needs of our teachers? What does meaningful professional learning look like? Feedback was sought from teachers, teacher leaders, and administrators from all 31 buildings and off-site programs. Teachers confirmed that they desire deep learning. One teacher saying, "We want to get good at something before moving on to something else." Educators desire professional learning that is differentiated, and they value frequent opportunities to learn from and with each other. This dovetails nicely with the 2013 Center for Public Education Report, Teaching the Teachers, where they identified that deep, meaningful professional learning occurs when robust instructional strategies are studied over time and coupled with support as they try to implement new learning. This report confirmed that professional learning ought to be an active experience, where strategies proven to be highly effective are modeled, and to the extent possible, professional learning ought to be classroom-specific. Current structures and systems have laid the foundation for this work ahead. We believe next year's calendar affords us the opportunity to refine these systems. Let me give you an example. In the past, I may have attended district professional learning to study one thing. In addition, I might have learned something completely different during building professional learning. Then I may have unpacked something else during PLC, and a fourth piece of new learning in observation and co-planning. All of these pieces could be quality, engaging moments of learning, but we're looking for ways to easily connect those moments for teachers. So knowing what we know now, how can we use Friday afternoons to more effectively allow for deep, differentiated learning that teachers desire and research supports? How can we make sure our building PLCs, professional learning, and observation and co-planning work together to provide a space for teachers to learn from each other as we endeavor to meet the learning needs of our students? How do we get to conversations about instruction? Not just what we teach, but in-depth conversations about how we teach. One of the things buildings can do is to streamline the use of data analysis protocols. I grew up a Rocky fan. He always had these incredible training montages, and as an adult, I have to watch my weight. Do you know how many times that I've actually trained like Rocky? Zero. Why? The reward was not worth embracing the effort required. The same thing can be true about data analysis. The payoff has to make it worth it. But what if the protocol was like the fitness app on my phone? With minimal strategic effort, this app gives me feedback as I work towards my fitness goal. What if a PLC protocol is used that informed your instruction with the same precise effort, streamlining the process? Another barrier can be lengthy, common formative assessments. We're thoughtful and thorough people. Sometimes we get locked into using PLCs to write the perfect test or test question. Takes so long that the assessment's not completely written until the unit's over, making it summative. What if PLCs agreed to a one- or two-question exit slip? When coupled with the previously mentioned streamlined data analysis protocol, a form of assessment can lead to the swift identification of an instructional strategy. Then during professional learning, that strategy can be modeled collaboratively planned by the team. Then another teacher, teacher leader, or administrator watches me teach it as we reflect and refine the practice. And lastly, we study its effect. The upcoming calendar provides teachers opportunity at school sites to collectively identify and implement targeted instructional strategies which address student needs in these quick weekly cycles, giving teachers the iterative instances of learning, practice, and coaching that the previously mentioned research indicates that teachers need to master a new skill. But what about your building? What are the needs of your students? What instructional practices meet their needs? What professional learning would equip you to meet the ever-changing needs of your students? What should your building leadership team be mindful of as they plan for next year? Your building's school improvement plan will drive how your building's professional learning is structured. Not every building's pattern of PLC work and professional learning will look the same, as the learning needs of students and therefore the adults vary from building to building. Professional learning on Friday will be, however, a targeted extension of your school improvement plan. Now, this building-based approach to professional learning produces deep, differentiated learning for most groups of people, but there are some for whom this may not work as well. We need to be mindful of their professional growth as well. These are your specialists, people without a common teaching partner in their building. Topics such as equity, feedback, and classroom culture are transcendent enough that they connect that learning to their specialized context. However, we will set aside time at least once a month for these groups to address the needs that are very specific to their world. So let's return back to the original question. Why does professional learning matter? It matters because students matter, as does the instruction they receive. John Hattie, the leading expert on student achievement, conducted research of over 800 meta-analyses of millions of students regarding the leading learning influences. He said it this way, "Teachers are among the most powerful influences in learning." He also concluded that some instructional practices support learning growth more than others. Professional learning matters because it creates a space for educators to collaboratively master the most high-quality instructional strategies which provide unlimited learning for all students. We look forward to embarking on this journey with you next year.
And that video with the calendars was sent out on April 29th to all certified staff. So I, one of the things that I'm particularly proud of with that process is that we included input from all 31 buildings, as was mentioned there, and off-site programs, and we're able to receive a tremendous amount of feedback. One kind of funny story in all this is that a couple came, middle school teachers, they turned into a date night. I'm sure it was the most romantic experience for them. However, they were committed enough to get a sitter and come be part of the process, and this was pretty typical of what I saw when I talked to teachers, teacher leaders, and administrators. So I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the recommendations that came out of this particular time, and they basically had two sets. One would be for buildings, and one would be for the district. I'd like to share those with you quickly, and then give you time to ask some questions. So the first thing that they talked about was the need to embed professional learning within the school improvement planning process. So if you think about that drawing there, what are our students' needs, so therefore what's the instruction that they need? That ought to be driving the professional learning. And so we were, we've laid out a process, and Kathleen Ziegler's right here, you can wave to the crowd here, that she's done a great job of structuring that so that buildings can think of things in six-week cycles. Then if we move on to the next one, has to do with utilizing meaningful feedback loops. One of the things that's been tricky about how we've been gathering feedback at this point is that it's been hard to break those down by buildings, and so we're working on that to have it be a personalized experience for each building. Third thing there is providing implementation support. And Joy really spoke to this when she spoke to the coaching that goes along with the professional learning that I believe you said Grantwood AEA provides. So if we think about Fridays and what's learned there, the very next week being this excellent opportunity for IDS and for principals to go and give teachers feedback on what they've learned. They just learned on Friday, and in that very same week, they have an opportunity to have somebody observe and to receive feedback. Another thing that came out of that time was that there'll be a record of attendance that's maintained. We're accountable to the public, and we've worked with HR and the association to develop a plan to maintain the integrity of this time. I have a couple other people that I'd like to mention here as well, because we're getting into some of the district-level suggestions, recommendations that the groups gave to me. And so we have Connie Starr and Melissa Hawking over there, and they are critical to the work that we're doing. They, the entire team, and there's a couple people I'd like to mention that weren't able to be here, Nicole Smith, Holly Palmer-Schime, and Carla Riley. They're critical to fueling these building efforts. So all of these things are designed around the school improvement plan, but it's the district's support that's allowing, I think, a lot of this work to happen, because they support that work. So I'd like to share a little bit of what we're going to be doing as we look into next year. We'll help in the writing and implementation of the school improvement plan. We'll also provide professional learning on professional learning. I tried to figure out a nicer way to say that, but I couldn't. And simply that means is that we're going to work to, so the building leadership, they're in it every day. It's our role to provide an opportunity to research what best practice is around professional learning and bring that to them. And so that's one of the things that we'll do. We're going to deliver on-demand resources, and I'll give you an example. With the ELA material adoption that you saw the last time we were here, we've already began work in getting feedback on what is exactly that buildings want. They want a cache of research so that they can build the background knowledge of teachers on the fundamentals of reading. They want video examples of teachers modeling the strategies that are part of that materials. And moving on, promoting implementation support. As we talked about before, that work of coaching, that's an opportunity to individualize and personalize that professional learning that happens on Friday, and what the people from the professional learning department get to do, they get to go out and strategize with people so that that link between Friday and what happens with coaching and observation the following week is very strategic and purposeful. And then the last one is, is we're going to continue to work to systematize the feedback loop. And the key word that you see there is meaningful. We want it to be nimble and building-specific, but also allows for information at the district level so we can continue to support. So one of the things that we're thinking about is a system of purposefully random surveys, so to avoid survey fatigue, because one of the things that you see is, is that even with the professional learning as infrequent as it is under our current calendar, there's survey fatigue. And how much more is it going to be when there's every week? So how can we randomize that so that way we can have true feedback? We're also going to combine that with what we learned from observation and co-planning, because you can give me feedback through a survey, but I can't tell from a survey whether it's changed practice. That's going to happen through the observation and co-planning process. And ultimately, we'll combine that with student data. So those are the, those were the recommendations that came out of our time, it started back in January, a meeting with people, and it's been a privilege to do all this. So I'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
Appreciate the information. It's awesome. I was excited to know John Hattie's name from. I worked with NEA Foundation this summer, so that was great. And I'm glad as well that there's an accountability measure in this. I know that it's great work, but that's the one question as a board member is why, and so I'm glad that you've addressed that part of it. So thank you so much. Oh, Gary.
Gary has a question.
I have to, deep thought.
Okay. Deep thoughts by Gary. Here we go.
First of all, I want to compliment you on your video. I think that was unique and much more meaningful, I think. Easier for us to understand, at least for me to understand. I'm more of a visual person, so thank you. The other is, wow, teaching and learning's gotten rather complex nowadays, hasn't it? I'm just amazed at the in-depth analysis and work that you're doing, but I have to say, it'll be the process looking at what, how do things change? Does it have a meaningful impact on the way we teach? And ultimately, what we're really looking at is how students are learning. So a great start, but I'm going to be, along with, I think, other board members, looking at, how does this, how does this turn out as we move forward?
That's why one of the first things we're going to do, we have a meeting scheduled yet this month, to start putting together, how do we collect feedback in a more meaningful way? Because one of the things that I noticed is that from one PL event to another, or professional learning event to another, the feedback is almost always the same. And that tells me that perhaps we're not asking the right questions or asking them the right way. And so as we, I had, I was fortunate that I was in a room with Susan Lutick, one of our consultants, and I mentioned this to her, and she gave us some ideas on how to get some more robust methods around getting meaningful feedback that go beyond surveys. So that's what we'll be digging into next.
I do have one comment. Really good information, and really something that our board supports and values, but it really makes me question, what are we doing in teacher prep programs in our colleges? I mean, are we moving the needle there? Are the teachers that are coming out of college equipped? Are they familiar with professional learning? It just seems there's a whole lot of burden on the K-12 system, or excuse me, yeah, the districts that hire these people, and I think we should, at some point, address that. I don't know how, but when's the last time it changed?
Right. I was at a UEN meeting on the 15th of April, and the University of Northern Iowa's come, had come to that meeting to seek feedback from the people. It was mostly curriculum directors and professional learning directors. And so I thought that was very encouraging. It's not something that we were in control of, but the fact that they traveled from Cedar Falls to Des Moines to have a dialogue around how do we best equip teachers, I thought was encouraging.
Any other comments? All right, thank you, Stephen. We appreciate your report very much. All right. With that, the board will be going into closed session at the end of the meeting, and it's for the evaluation of professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered. We have a few other items before we do that, but is there a motion and a second to move into that closed session at the end of the meeting?
I move that we go into a closed session for evaluation purposes at the end of the meeting, Jen.
Is there a second?
Second.
And this is a roll call.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
Director Hamblin, aye. President Laberty.
Aye. The next items under human resources, if you want to say a couple of words, Jill?
Sure. Thank you, President Laberty. Yeah, we do have, we were happy that in staffing, we were able to place most teachers who were placed in the surplus pool based on reductions. We do, though, have three partial teacher contracts and one full teacher contract on the board agenda tonight to terminate those contracts. We do hope that we will, they'll be, have recall rights under the collective bargaining agreement, and we hope that we will be able to place them by the start of the school year, but we can't guarantee that.
Thank you. This is very unfortunate, given the budget situation we're in, and this is certainly something that the board looks forward to at all, but it's a reality at this point. So the process for this is, I'll read the staff member's name. It does not require a motion or a second, but it does require a roll call on each one individually. So the first is BA 16307, termination of a teacher contract for Grant Brown.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Janson.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
Director Meisterlein.
Aye.
Director Bobo.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
Director Meisterlein.
Aye.
Director Bobo.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
Director Meisterlein.
Aye.
Director Bobo.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
Director Meisterlein.
Aye.
Director Bobo.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll move into retiree recognition, and again, Jill, I don't know if you have anything, or if this is, this is a video. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
The Cedar Rapids Community School District is proud to recognize the career contributions of our retiring employees. The efforts of these teachers, support staff members, and administrators have enriched the lives of thousands of students and have strengthened the district and community. I'm pleased to congratulate them on their accomplished careers and to thank them for their dedicated years of service.
Scott Pametiki has taught science at Washington High School for 18 years. He is a veteran of the US Army, has taught in other school districts, and also worked outside of education at Tubbs Transport, WR Grace, Cryovac, Square D, Rockwell Collins, American Profol, and the Wilson Sinclair Packing Plant. We thank Scott for his many years of service to the district, and we congratulate him on his retirement.
National Board Certified Teacher Tracy Maxstedt has taught science courses at Jefferson High School for 24 years. We thank her for supporting hundreds of students during her career, and we wish her all the best in retirement. Congratulations.
What I'm going to miss most about my job is working with my colleagues and the kids, talking to the kids, seeing how they change over the course of a year. I'm going to spend more time with my mom, she's in her 80s, and more time with my grandkids because they're growing up very fast, and maybe do a little traveling.
Pat Cadlec is a 21-year veteran with the district. She currently teaches 5th grade at Hiawatha Elementary School. Earlier in her career, she taught the same grade level at Wilson School. She also served as the counselor at Truman Elementary. We congratulate Pat on her successful career and thank her for her support of students. Congratulations.
I'm going to miss the friendships that I've made here and the daily stories that we share. I'm going to miss the administration. The best part, though, has been, in the last five years, we have created this school that's pretty amazing, and the addition of many, many ELL kids has made it a really wonderful, interesting place. Well, I have a whole bucket list. I have in my bucket list to hike the Appalachian Trail and to hike the Pacific Coast Trail, and I plan to stay really busy. I thought I was going to sleep a lot, but I think there's too much to do.
Patty Cuchara teaches 4th grade at Pierce Elementary School. Her 23-year career also includes teaching both 5th and 8th grades at Wilson School. We thank Patty for her many years of service to the students and families of the district, and we congratulate her on her retirement.
The thing I'm going to miss the most about my job is working with the students and my colleagues. I think that each day is a new day when we come in, and it's fun to see their eyes light up when they learn something new. I think the best part of my job is watching the children grow and actually learning new ways to help them, and as the district has progressed through the years, the way that we've looked at student learning and been able to improve upon that, and really look at the whole child. One other thing I'm looking forward to doing is just kind of relaxing, and I'm also really looking forward to visiting family. We have children all over the country with grandchildren, and we have a new grandchild coming, actually, in another week, and so we're excited to do that. So, we're going to do some traveling. I also want to do some volunteering in Cedar Rapids. That's been hard, as a full-time teacher, doing that and giving back to the community.
Carolyn Wieland is currently a physical education teacher at Taft Middle School. During her 21-year career with the district, she also taught PE at Franklin and Roosevelt Middle Schools and at Johnson Elementary School. Additionally, Carolyn served as the Five Seasons Daycare Site Director at Nixon. We thank Carolyn for her many years of supporting students and wish her all the best in her retirement.
It's what the kids need to know, and it's a big process of getting to know the kids, bonding with them. Best joy is when you see that they've got it. That's what I like most about teaching. Enjoying most will be knowing that I will not have to shovel snow anymore because we are moving to a warmer climate. Main reason for that is because our daughter lives out west, and we're going to join her, and I can't wait.
With that, I'll just remind everybody that you have your school calendar, and leave your evaluations, and we'll move into closed session.